Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The Board will participate in four meetings today. We will begin with a special meeting for expulsions, followed by a workshop, special meeting, and special meeting for school safety, security, FSAT findings. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair McQuinn?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will begin the special meeting for expulsions. Mrs. Sinclair, please call the roll.
District one Barbara McQuinn.
Here.
District two Alexandria Ayella.
Here.
District three Karen Brill.
Here.
District four Erica Whitfield.
Here.
District five Frank Barbieri.
Here.
District six Marsha Andrews.
Here.
District seven Edwin Ferguson.
Here.
Okay, also joining us, though the record will reflect that we've, I'm sorry. We're fine. It's me. I don't have any items to add for good cause. Mr. Superintendent, do you have any items to withdraw?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, Board members, do you have any items to pull? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mrs. Andrews, second by Mrs. Whitfield. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any disclosures or abstentions? Okay, we don't have any agenda items. Speakers, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second by Vice Chair McQuinn. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We don't have any new business, so I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Ms. Ayella, second by Mrs. Whitfield. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I apologize for my voice. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'll now call the workshop to order at 2:02 PM. The record will reflect that we still have a quorum with seven board members present. Also joining us is Superintendent Michael Burke, General Counsel Sean Bernard, Inspector General Teresa Michael, and Board Clerk Tony Sinclair. Senior staff members will join us periodically as directed by the Superintendent. Viewers and listeners can access the meeting today by either watching on Comcast Channels 234 and 235, U-verse Channel 99, or by using the YouTube link on our webpage at PalmBeachSchools.org. In the event that the link is interrupted for technical reasons, please switch over to the TV channels. All board meetings are recorded in their entirety and posted on the district website within 24 hours. We also offer a listening-only option, which the public can access by calling 561-357-5900 or toll-free at 1-866-930-7015. The meeting ID is 1-561-880-1124. I'll now turn the workshop over to the Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it's my pleasure to invite up our good friends from the Education Foundation, Mr. James Gavillos and Ms. Teresa West. They are going to be providing the annual report and sharing with us all the efforts on behalf of our students and schools throughout Palm Beach County. So we'll just give the team here a minute to, I know they've got a presentation they're going to take us through. Welcome, Mr. Gavillos, Ms. West.
Thank you Superintendent Burke. Madam Chair. As a school board, it's our pleasure, as you know, to give you a formative update. You need to call once a year, ask for our panel to understand and make an update. A more formal overview of the work. We will be covering fiscal year 2324. The fiscal year for the Ed Foundation begins July 1, ends June 30. So we'll be looking at the report for last year's fiscal year. In the interest of brevity today, we're going to kind of move through the overview. I think you've heard me four minutes a month for the last seven years. You know who we are and what we do and how we do it. I do want to just pause on this slide where we talk about our Board of Directors and specifically recognize the members of our Board who are from the school district, starting with Superintendent Mike Burke, Deputy Superintendent Ed Tierney, Chief Academic Officer Dr. Glenda Sheffield. We now have Erica Whitfield on our Board. Karen, you will always be a member of our Board family. LeAnn Evans, who was down here earlier doing some signing for us, and our newest member, Dave Dolan. And we want to thank all the members of the school districts who are active members of our Board of Directors. Let's get into the heart and guts of what we do. When we talk about the work over the last couple of years, but specifically in fiscal year 2324, you'll see in total we provided just under $3 million in value to the school district. And let's look at that breakdown. On the grant side of the house, we're going to look at two different categories. If you look at the left side of your screen, this is a consortium of Florida Education Foundation matching grants. Last year, the matching grant program totaled $553,463.05. To remind you the way this works, we are apportioned some money from the state budget, which we then match dollar for dollar with local dollars. So every one of those programs that you see there, for example, the Atlantic Eagles Finance Academy, the local partner being Bank of America, they put up 50%. We get 50% of the funding from the state budget. Stepping up STEM in Pahokee, one of our longest-running and most effective and impactful programs, the local funder being Ventus Charitable Foundation, as well as Aerojet Rocketdyne. The Behavioral Health Technician Career Pipeline, that local funder is Quantum Foundation. Rocket-powered robotics, we want to thank Aerojet Rocketdyne for being our local funder. Digital inclusion, I'm going to say more about that as I will with GoTeach. Educate, Affirm, Inspire with the Spire Reading Program is our partnership with the Chamber of Commerce in Boca Raton, their Golden Bell Foundation. And then building oral language and vocab in VPK is our partnership with PNC Bank. All of those local funders put up 50%, the other 50% coming from the state budget. I would remind the school board and all of you who are listening at home, that item comes up on the Tallahassee budget every year, and we certainly encourage you to reach out to our 13 local officials, our House of Representatives and our state senators, encourage them to continue to approve that item in the budget. It is now a $6 million recurring line item in the state budget, and as you can see, just do the math there, our portion of that in Palm Beach County is about $300,000. On the right side of that slide there, you're seeing the program-specific grants. Those are just funded strictly from us. At the top of the list, we're very pleased with this grant we received for the police department. That came through our friends at ADT. We want to thank Bob Tucker for making that happen. I don't think our school police get near enough credit in this community for the great work they do, and we were privileged to make that grant. The rest of those, I think, are things that we've talked about at the board reports. So again, in the interest of brevity, I'm going to move on, and we'll certainly take some questions at the end. Our digital inclusion program, we picked up a stray, a guy named Mark Howard, who is doing a great job. He's now part-time working with the foundation. You got to hear him last month. At a forthcoming board meeting, Mark will give a formal and more in-depth presentation on the digital inclusion plan and how that is working with our partnership between the school district and certainly Palm Beach County. So again, in the interest of brevity, it's out there, but we'll give you further details later. Resilience through the community, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Keith Oswald and his team for doing great work with Jennifer Etheridge. This is a federal, not a grant, but a contract to provide resiliency training for our teachers. We've spoken about this in past board meetings, so again, I'm going to move through that. But that is a huge program which is continuing this year. We are now looking for, since the federal contract is sunsetting, we are looking for local funders who will continue that, Superintendent Burke, because we believe that the mental health of our young people is paramount. One of the programs that has had some outstanding outcomes is funded by PNC Bank and our board member Kim Reckley. You're going to see that 98% of the kids participating in this particular program demonstrated an increase in their STAR early literacy assessment scores. We are all very concerned about reading and the reading level of our young people. This program is helping them get kindergarten and first grade ready, so all credit to PNC Bank for that program. We talk about our GoTeach quite a bit. Quickly, as you look at last year's GoTeach grants, we awarded 88 of them, totaling about $185,000, involving 61 schools, 1,769 teachers, and over 24,500 students were involved in the various GoTeach programs. These GoTeach grants range from 1,000 to 3,000, and with the generosity of Dr. David Nicholson and the Stiles-Nicholson Foundation, we do award $5,000 financial literacy and STEM grants at the elementary, middle, and high school level. So at all three levels in those two categories, thanks to Dr. Nicholson, we are awarding those $5,000 GoTeach grants. This year, on Thursday evening, October 24, at the Boynton Beach Cultural and Arts Center, we will be awarding this year's GoTeach grants, and I believe there's 91 of them totaling $190,000. We are awarding more funds this year for GoTeach than ever before. Our career academies continue to do very well as we continue funding the HVAC program at Royal Palm. Thank you to Carrier. The cybersecurity program is in its final year of funding from the Frederick A. DeLuca Foundation. I've already mentioned the finance and behavioral health technician programs. The Fire Science Academy, which we were able to secure the original funding through JP Morgan Chase, and the other academies as well. I'm moving through that slide again. I spoke about the cybersecurity program last month. Another program we provide is a service to the school district. We administer a couple of different scholarships. We administer the Winter Scholarship, which is now, I believe, in its 20th year. There are four of our elementary schools participating in that particular program. For the last three years, we have been administering a scholarship program for HCA, providing scholarships for our young people who are written into careers in medical academies. And I am pleased to announce that, as many of you are aware, our board member and beloved member of this community, Kelly Smallridge, recently lost her son. The Business Development Board has started a scholarship in honor of Rhett Smallridge, and we are the fiscal agent for that as well. So we'll be running three different scholarship programs as a service to our students. Speaking of these various services, Superintendent Burke, you as a CPA will appreciate this. Ladies and gentlemen, the Board, you know about our grant programs, you know about Red Apple, and Teresa will be speaking more about that momentarily. Another service we provide for the school district is we serve as the fiscal agent, and I believe right now we're up to about 50 accounts totaling some $748,000 under management. We do not take a management fee for this. This is a service we provide to the school district. It's another way that we help you carry out your mission. As you can see, all of those various fiscal agent accounts are involved in our schools and our students' lives. And here I want to thank Sam, who is sitting in the back, Sam Pasly, our accountant, who is himself a former teacher in the Palm Beach County Public School District. He saw the light superintendent and came over to the good side of the force in the nonprofit world, but he administers all of these fiscal agent accounts. Again, I repeat, we take no administrative overhead on this. It's a service we provide to the school district. Our signature program is, of course, Red Apple Supply. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Teresa West, who is going to walk you through the next few slides.
Thank you, James, and hello, everybody. Hello, Teresa. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. We're excited. Red Apple Supplies, as you can see, has really grown throughout the years. You can see the impact numbers there, but last year, just almost $1.9 million in school supplies distributed, and since opening the doors in 2016, eight years ago, we've distributed $7.5 million of school supplies and resources. And I think this gives you a nice visual of the different numbers, starting from 2016, when Red Apple Supplies first started, all the way to this year. And we did see a big increase with the students served, and about 20%, I would say. So it's very exciting, and we'll continue to grow, especially, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, the new building coming up in a few months. This slide, I think, is really important just because, starting with the first year of 50,000, which we thought was really big, and now fast forward eight years, with $1.8 million this past fiscal year of supplies distributed, which was about a 58% increase. So that was really exciting, and we got to see more teachers. We have the online shopping available, and we'll continue to reach more and more teachers and students. Backpack Initiative, which a lot of you are involved with or know about, but this year was our largest year, and we distributed, it's actually 24,640 backpacks delivered to 44 schools. We did have a few backpacks and schools along the way. One really exciting thing that came out of all of this was our volunteers. We almost doubled the number of volunteers and volunteer hours to make this happen, and we held it all in the month of July. So two shifts per day, five to six days a week. It was a very busy July, but very, a lot of smiles and a lot of good impact at the end. I talked about our volunteers, but on the bottom left of the slide, you'll see one of our, we call them our "Apple Core Volunteers." That's Barbara Judd, if you've ever met her. She is amazing, actually a former teacher as well. Her daughter's a teacher, but she is at Red Apple helping us, and we cannot do what we do without our volunteers.
We do a number of events throughout the year. Obviously, this Sunday, hopefully you're all early risers, we have our Heroes in Education 5K. This is the 10th year. Teresa was actually on staff when that was started 10 years ago. So we're very excited. We have, I believe, we're projecting over 1,600 registrants to be running in the race. We're very excited for this Sunday's event. The GoTeach Classroom Grants I've highlighted. We also administer for the district the Celebrate the Great, where we recognize our Teacher of the Year, Principal of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, and School District Employee of the Year. Our Distinguished Alumni and Leadership Award is held in the spring, where we recognize one of our alums who has gone on to great success. Superintendent Burke, you planted the seed in us a couple of years ago. We are exploring the formation of a Palm Beach County Alumni Association. Graduating 12,000 kids a year, my guess is we've got a couple hundred thousand alums. We just need to connect them, so we're looking at the mechanics of how we can actually make that work. With a staff of 10 full-time and two part-time, it's stretching our capacity a bit, but Superintendent Burke, I do want you to know we are exploring that. And then, of course, in partnership with Joe Sanchez and your amazing facilities group, the Bill Malone For Our Schools Golf Tournament, which we hold in the spring as well. Those are the major events that we do, in addition to the corporate fundraising and grant writing that we do that provide the income to carry off all these various programs. Back to Teresa.
So the capital campaign, we're nearing the end, and the building is almost finished. We were there yesterday, and they're working on all the interior finishes, which is very exciting. If you haven't been by, we're doing a few hard hat tours coming up, but we plan to do all the clothes, the final punch list, and then we'll hold our ribbon cutting on January 16. So we hope you all can join us for the ribbon cutting, and we'll also be stocking our warehouse so that way we have all the supplies and we're not doing the tour with an empty warehouse. So we'll, more information to come, but we hope you will join us for stocking the warehouse as well.
On our stocking the warehouse, we'll be reaching out to our champions, organizations, individuals. I won't look at anyone in particular to get your checkbook out, even though he may no longer be on the school board, Mr. Barbieri, but we will be working on that. On the capital campaign itself, Superintendent Burke, as somebody who runs a system of 182 schools, you can appreciate, this is probably the first time in history this has ever happened. Ladies and gentlemen, as we have shared with you, Proctor Construction is now about six weeks ahead of schedule and significantly under budget. I don't know the last time a building was built in Palm Beach County that came in ahead of schedule and significantly almost 8% under budget. And so we want to thank Proctor Construction for all the work that they have done. They will be turning over the key to us in the next, say, three weeks. We'll be moving in in November and December. When we come out of the holiday break on January 6, we will be fully operational in our new facility, as Teresa said, doing our ribbon cutting on January 16. We're looking now at a building that's going to cost, originally we said about 14.9 million. It looks now to be more like 13.9. Sam's in the background, and he's not throwing anything at me, so I think I'm pretty safe on that number. Thanks to Teresa and Rita and our fundraising team, we've raised about 12.5. So in order to close that gap while we're still actively cultivating additional donors, just literally minutes ago, we are signing documents with TD Bank for a $2.5 million line of credit. We will access what we need, and then as we raise the rest of the funds for the capital campaign, we will close that line off. But as school board, I did want you to know that we have taken out that line of credit through TD to make sure that we can get our bills paid in an expeditious manner.
Some fun facts. I wish I covered the 69,000, but I thought that was a pretty amazing number to share, that the new building will have 69,000 pavers. But you can see a lot of the different facts and figures and the numbers that go into building this amazing new facility.
As Teresa said, we were just there yesterday. It is a 32,000-square-foot facility. Proctor is done with the outside. There you are, putting the finishing touches on the inside. We are offering these hard hat tours. There are four of them set aside in October and November. If you'd like to come and get an advanced look, give Teresa a call, and we'll get you scheduled. And that is our very, very brief overview. I want to thank Superintendent Burke, certainly starting with you. Chairwoman Brill, not only as your role now as the Chair of the School Board, but for over a dozen years, you sat as a member of our Board of Directors. You know, you've been involved in the weeds with us. Erica Whitfield, you know, now you as a member of our Board. Dave Dolan, if you're here somewhere, we want to thank you as well. Ed Tierney, Dr. Sheffield, LeAnn Evans, all of the school district for your incredible support for the work we do. At this point, we will stop and take any questions you have about the programs. I can bring back some of the program slides, whether it's the program side of the house, the Red Apple, or anything specific about our capital campaign.
Before I call on the board members, I'll be brief, because you don't want to hear my voice, just to say that thank you for all that you do. We couldn't do what we do without you. The transformation of the Education Foundation over the past years has been nothing short of amazing, and I can't wait for the ribbon cutting. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to take a minute to thank you as well. I was thinking about it the other day, and I couldn't believe that there was a time where we didn't have an Education Foundation that looked like this. It has been so helpful for this community, for our schools. The work you guys do is definitely more than the staff that you have. It is incredible how much is happening, and to see the new building in action, I cannot wait to be able to see it completed and to be able to be in there and to have our meetings in there. It has been just wonderful having you all as a partner in our school system, and I just want to say thank you so much.
If I can respond to Ms. Whitfield, and I do need to say this about the staff, you've heard me say this, and I don't say this with any snarkiness or false humility, I could be replaced by a trained squirrel, but if you took our staff out of the picture, if you took Teresa or Jennifer or Rita or Angel or any of the, Sam, things would fall apart. You mentioned our staff. I do want to let this board know, last week at the CFEF Conference in Orlando, Jennifer Etheridge, who is our program director, who many of you have met many times, Jennifer was singled out, out of the entire state of Florida. There are 64 education foundations comprising about 360 employees. Jennifer Etheridge was selected as this year's Superstar Staff Awardee, and she was given this award on behalf of the entire state of Florida, not just because of her professionalism and her dedication to her craft, but what she has done for other education foundations. Superintendent Burke, you and I have chatted about this. Many of the programs that we have spearheaded here, the Resiliency Program, the Fire Science Academy, the Behavioral Health Technician, because of Jennifer, are now spreading through Marion County, Okeechobee County, and other parts in the state of Florida. And so it is a first-class staff, Erica, and I thank you for that.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. And I look through your packet and just love everything that you do, and I don't want to go through everything because all of it's great, but I want to tell you, you communicate so well. Your partnership with the school district of Palm Beach County truly helps our children first, our school centers, our families, our teachers, our principals. Everybody actually gets something from this relationship that we have with you, and I've seen you grow from the very beginning, and look at you now, and now to have the new building. But it's truly not all about the building. It's nice to have that, but what you do inside that building means so much, and the stakeholders, the partners, those business partners, HCA as well as all the rest of them that partner with you and go and do the grit to make it work in collaboration with the schools and the children. It's fabulous. So today is the day to celebrate all that you do for us, to say thank you, and continue to just keep on moving. We appreciate you.
Mr. Barbieri.
Mr. Gavillos, you're too modest. You do have a great staff, but it's, the turnaround in this foundation is just unbelievable. I've checked some of the other foundations around the state. We must be the envy of the entire state. What you've done in the short time, which is probably, seems like a lifetime to you, as the head of that organization, has made an immense difference in the district, in our schools, and with our children. So although I won't be here to do this again next year, I'm going to come up there, because I told you, I plan on spending a lot of my time volunteering to help you all out there. So I'll see you all again up there.
Have I got a place for you to volunteer?
I'm sure you do.
Well, thank you, James and Teresa. Appreciate your ongoing support. It's a great partnership we have.
Thank you very much. At the end of the day, folks, we brought just under $3 million worth of value to the school district in fiscal year 2324, and we look to improve on that in 2425. Thank you for all of your support. Have a good rest of your meeting.
All right. So that will bring us to our annual instructional review workshop, to be led by Deputy Superintendent Ed Tierney and our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Glenda Sheffield. I do want to point out what they're getting situated, that we challenged the team last year. Mr. Tierney oversees all of our principal supervisors, and we reorganized our regional offices, and they got by last year with two fewer instructional superintendents, but still had a very good return and some great outcomes. And then also Dr. Sheffield and other leaders throughout our building here in the district. Last, you know, the second semester of last school year, after the winter break, we deployed nearly 90 people out of their offices to get directly into classrooms and help work with our students. And I think both of those things served us well, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Tierney to kick us off here with this next workshop.
Chairwoman Brill, Vice Chair Ms. McQuinn, School Board Members, Superintendent Burke, very pleased to be part of the presentation on the instructional review for fiscal year 24. I'm always pleased to work on something with our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Glenda Sheffield, seated here as well. Your agenda for this brief workshop, we're going to look at last year's performance. We will look at school and district results. We'll compare ourselves, as always, to the urban seven districts. We'll look to make sure that all students are progressing, and we will give some academic updates, show the board that this year will be better than last year. If you missed our subtle reference to the school, the district grade of A, I'm going to call your attention to the top half of that slide. We are pleased with that, although not satisfied. Making that A all the more coveted this year was the state of Florida significantly increased the requirement to earn an A for secondary schools, for school district, and combination schools. So it has been 62% for a very long time. It is 64% now, a significant increase, and Palm Beach County not only met but exceeded that threshold. You see here the percent of district-operated A and B schools, the highest going back since before 2015, and once again, that is with a threshold that's significantly higher than we've ever seen in the state of Florida. This slide combines third through 10th grade students, and we're looking at English Language Arts, so a denominator of about 100,000 students, and you can see that Palm Beach County moved from 49% two years ago to 54% last year. So while, of course, still work to be done, we saw a significant increase in our ELA scores in the combined third through 10th. That 54% puts us in our ranking system, we traditionally use as second among the urban seven. So we saw a 56, a couple districts at 56, and our 54 score puts us at a second among the urban seven. And if we continue across that row, our increase of 5% for ELA scores was also ranked second among urban seven regarding the increases from two years ago to last year. So we saw strong performance in literacy rates in Palm Beach County, and are dedicated to continuing to see that trend. This is the same slide layout for math. We've combined third through eighth grade math, and you can see Palm Beach County moved from 51% to 55%. That ranks us as third among the urban seven as far as performance and high standards. That increase of 4% ties us with the state and ties us for second place among urban seven districts. So plus four for ELA scores, for, plus four for math scores, plus five for ELA scores, very, very large denominator, difficult to move, so we saw a strong academic performance on the ELA and math side. Purpose of this slide is to assure the board and the community that we are watching all students, to make sure that the success of some groups of students doesn't mask the lack of success for others. So the left side of this screen is ELA, the right side is math. If we look at ELA difference, we see generally student groups performing similarly. The one, the one that kind of catches our eye is the English Language Learner students struggling with ELA standards. So we are working hard to support those students in that area. If we stick with English Language Learners and look across to math, it is nice to see that same population exceeding the average gain in math. So they came in at 4.9%, our district average 4.3%. So otherwise, generally performing similarly. We recognize the need to support them in ELA, and pleased that that group is outperforming the average in math. The Board is aware that last year The Board is aware that last year when we sat here for our instructional review, that we had 90 people from this building being pushed out into schools for student-facing support. And we appreciate the 90 people that disrupted their professional lives to do that, and appreciate the schools that welcomed those staff members in to the students to whom we owed the most debt. So, we thought we'd put our learning gains here to review the results of that work, and we see our learning gains for English ranked three, low 25 were six, math learning gained seventh, and math low 25 ninth. I'm just going to call your attention to the fact that the previous rankings were among the Urban Seven districts. This ranking is among the 67 districts in the entire state. So, when I say third, that's third of 67, evidencing the effectiveness of the teachers, the school-based administration, and the people who went out and supported those students. Who are pleased with that, we will repeat it, of course, but we did think it was worth mentioning how much that impacted the students to whom we owed the most debt. The Board is aware of the emphasis that Palm Beach County puts on accelerating as many students as possible, beginning in elementary school, then middle school, and then high school. This is truly an organizational effort, all the schools in this district, the regional offices. I'd speak with Superintendent Burke about this monthly when we're not scheduling in the off-season, and we talk about how we can refine our processes to increase enrollment and success in academic, in advanced coursework. And then when we are scheduling, he and I talk at least weekly, sometimes more, to make sure that we are accelerating as many students as possible. You're seeing now the middle school results of the last two years. So, we see black students in middle school have an 11.1% increase in advanced coursework, enrollment in advanced coursework, or Hispanic students 13.4%, white students up 4.1%, and other 6.5. So, we see significant increases, and we're also seeing that orange line, which is the current year, all getting closer together as we close gaps for all students in the district. This does not include electives, this is only core classes. So, we're only looking at English, Math, Science, Social Studies. So, we're pleased with the results of middle school advanced course scheduling, recognizing that goes to high school advanced course scheduling, which is the college credit scholarship generating classes. And that's what you're looking at on your slide now. We see over the past two years, our black students' enrollment in advanced coursework in high school is up 11.6%. Black students had the highest gain two years ago, three years ago to two years ago, and then two years ago to last year. So, for two years in a row, the students who we needed to make the most progress with has made the most progress. Hispanic students up 9.8%, white 6.0, and other 7.1. So, we're seeing gains across the board with the largest gains with the students who needed those gains. We're very pleased with that. We're continuing to find that practice and anticipate continuing to enroll and accelerate more students. And then we'll get to some of the highlights. You see 113 district-operated schools ranked A or B, recognizing that A or B was harder to earn this year. Great successes among high school, middle school, and elementary regarding increases and percents of As and Bs. 53% of the district schools improving a letter grade, and our middle schools did well when we're ranking them against other middle schools in the state.
Thank you, Ms. Tierney. As we continue to just talk about some of the highlights from last year before moving into talking about what we are continuing, what we're going to continue to do and the adjustments that were made, is that we are excited to, thank you, Jonathan, we're excited about, you know, right now that first bullet talks about, you know, the district had the second highest percentage of A-rated schools following, that's following Miami Dade amongst the seven large urban districts. And of course, we are tied with Orange for the second highest percentage of A-rated combination schools. Again, that's among our seven large urban districts. And as we move in to talking and looking at some of our core instruction, we definitely celebrate the growth that we had with Algebra I. We saw 11 points increase in Algebra I, the first, we are the first among the large urban, large seven urban districts. And then in three through 10 ELA, we saw a five points increase there to where it tied a second amongst the large, the large urban districts. And again, with math, with three, grades three through eight, we saw a four points increase there that tied a second among the large urban districts. But before we move to the next slides, we cannot move forward to not really talk about the success from our Glaze region in last year in FY24. So, we do want to just say, you know, the teachers there in the Glaze, the principals, the Glaze community, a job well done. Ms. Moore, Angela Moore, the Regional Superintendent, and Dr. McTier, the Instructional Superintendent, the work that they have done in terms of working alongside with the principal, the teachers, and those students, they had an unprecedented year for FY24. So, we just want to really celebrate the achievements there from our Glaze region. Also, we want to really look in regards to and celebrate the two-letter grades jump from Plomosa Elementary, going from a C to an A. They had not been an A since 2012. And then Canal Points also went two-letter grades. They had not, from a D to a B, and they had not been in B since 2019. So, kudos to both of those schools. And there you see that last bullet there, our seven schools that had improved their letter grades, reaching historically high ratings that we had not seen in decades. And I know for the essence of time, but they deserving for me to call their names, and I'm going to call them real quick. Okeechelee Middle, Pahokee Elementary, Pell Meadows, Spady, Seminole Trails, South Grade, and Westwood Elementary, congratulations. So, again, job well done in regards to the performance of our schools, our teachers, and everyone that has just been involved in maximizing the learning opportunities for our students. But alongside with that, as Mr. Tierney indicated, and the constant support that we're receiving from the Superintendent, and of course, here with our partnership with Dr. Parker and her team there at Palm Beach State College, we had to put this slide in to really celebrate the success that we had this past year in 24 with dual enrollment. Board, we had over 4,700 students that participated in dual enrollment courses, and the number of courses was over 13,700. And with that, you see the high number of students, the courses, 95% pass rate in terms of those students earning a grade A, B, or C, with an average GPA of 3.47. But more importantly, Board, we saved our students and their families over $4.1 million in tuition. That is a lot to be celebrated. And also, last year in FY24, it's the first ever for this district that we've had 110 students that earned their AA degree at the same time graduating high school. And Seminole Ridge led that charge for us as a district, Mr. Hatcher and his team there with 35 students. John I. Leonard came in second with 22 students. And then, of course, the work that Dr. Howell is doing there at Bear Lakes Middle School, to where he's accelerating his students at Bear Lakes Middle School with the opportunity there with the Early College Summer Bridge Program there at Palm Beach State as well. At our September Principal Leadership Summit, the Superintendent allowed Palm Beach State to come in, and you will see the picture there, to where we recognize those three principals in front of their peers, just for a job well done. And the other photo there that's up in the top, my top right, are our students that earned their AA degree where they participated with Palm Beach, Palm Beach State at their spring commencement exercise, where they had our students there, front row, in terms of earning their AA degree. So, thank you to Dr. Parker, her team, for the partnership that we have there with Palm Beach State College. Continuing talking about the acceleration and our commitment to our families. Here on this particular slide, we talk about the number of students that earned their ACE diploma there in FY24. You can see the increases from 22 on up to 24, where we had 2,145 of those students that earned their ACE diploma, and you see that we had 191 that earned their AP capstone through College Board. More importantly there, we had 2,428 of those students where they were all eligible for a full Bright Future Scholarship, meaning their college tuition being paid. And Mr. Tierney and I worked very closely in calibrating and collecting the number of scholarship dollars for the class of 24. And what we gauged from calibrating the survey that came in is that we had over $148 million there in scholarships for the class of 24. And as we talk about, you know, career and college readiness, well, let's look in regards to the number of industry certification exams that were administered in FY24. 14,795 CTE exams were administered to our students with a pass rate of 74%. So, as we talk about and we celebrate the successes from FY24, we know that there are always room for academic improvement. So, Mr. Tierney and I, we work very closely together in terms of doing our SWOT analysis. The progress we're making is great, but how do we continue to close the achievement gap of our students and meeting the needs of all students? So, this is where this is coming into now. I'm just highlighting very briefly for you, particularly around that first bullet that talks about ELA and K-12 mathematics, and that's where we have incorporated what we called our achievement level descriptors into our look-for documents for our teachers. So, we're really spending a lot of time in terms of looking at what we're providing to our teachers, working closely with our teachers, making certain that our instruction is on task and aligned to state standards. In it's of meeting the quality, I should say, in regards to our, you know, DQs, what we call it, you know, achievement levels, 1, 2, 3, 4, et cetera. Then, of course, we modified our summative assessments, our FSQs and our USAs, to ensure that our students are receiving the necessary practices that they, that they should be receiving to make certain that they are prepared for their progress monitoring state examinations. And from the feedback that we receive from our teachers, from our principals, and other users, is that we take, we took the feedback, we looked at our scope and our sequence mapping that we were providing alongside with our pacing calendars, and we have modified, modified based on the feedback that we have received. And more importantly, you're going to hear on these next few slides where we talk about being intentional around the professional learning opportunities for, not just for our teachers, but also for our administrators, and making certain that it is aligned to those foundational literacy, literacy components. We have, we started last year with our phonics initiatives. We're continuing that work this year, particularly around K-2, because we understand that's where our students are learning to read, so we have to get those foundational knowledge. And what we want to share with you in regards to the phonics initiative that we are involved in as a district, because you've probably heard a lot about UFLI, you've probably heard a lot about foundations, you've probably also heard a lot about Estrelita, think I said it correctly, that we're utilizing there within our dual-language schools, we're going to show you just a very snippet video in regards to what that work looks like.
The I says "i" like itch. So, me first, when Mama Echo looks at you, you repeat, okay? I, itch, i.
I, itch, i.
You got it. Now, we're going to also look at the I over here. Mama Echo wants us to learn them on these cards also. So, what is the name of this letter?
I.
I. And what's the picture we're going to use to remember?
The monkey.
But what are we going to say for the monkey?
It.
And what sound does the letter make?
E.
E.
E. Muy bien.
Thank you. Again, it's always important for us to show you the work that is actually occurring. So, we've providing a lot of trainings for our teachers. You can see those are our teachers. But the teachers are not the only one that are being involved in the training. Our principals are involved in the training, our regional staff is being involved, the curriculum team here in the district office, myself, Mr. Tierney, everyone that is close to this work, we're being involved because we are committed, because we want to make certain that we are, I should, you know, we are enhancing the instructional pedagogy of not just our teachers, but all of our adult learners. So, that was just a snippet in regards to the work that is taking place. So, again, alongside the work, the work that is taking place around our phonics initiative that you've seen there, again, I have to thank the Superintendent and of course, our CFO that's holding the checkbook, because anytime that we have our initiatives and we are, and she sees that it's impacting our students, she really worked closely with us in making certain that we have what is needed. And we have a big training that's taking place here in October around our UFLI implementation for our schools. So, again, thank you. So, now we go on, leaving the phonics initiative and the work that we're doing there, is that we're going to continue to work and build in regards to our universal gifted screener for our second-grade students. Last year in FY22, we provided that universal gifted screener to 73% of our second-grade students, and it gives the number of students that were impacted there. And out of that 73%, 21% of those students showed the potential for giftedness. So, one thing that we are doing this year is that once we've provided the universal screener, the team now is we're working in regards to solidifying and making certain the follow-through occurs in regards to the next round of testing for those students that are being identified. And you can see there with the work that we're doing around our universal gifted screener, that we saw an increase of 22% in identification of our potential giftedness students in our ELL population, as well as other underrepresented subgroups from FY23 to FY24. So, I spoke earlier in regards to the professional learning and the work that we're doing in terms of closing the achievement gap, is that here, this is just a snippet, we did not do a video, but just, it's just a slide here that's showing what the learning is looking like when our teachers are participating and so forth. And this particular one here talks about, you know, our expansion of grade levels and the quadrates that we are providing, that it's aligned to our scope and sequence and so forth. And again, our Philamingo Literacy Small Group Framework, this is the work that we are doing with the University of Florida around K-2 and small group instruction. Again, building the instructional pedagogy of our teachers and other adult learners, the end-users. Also, I spoke about our administrators being involved in their professional learning as well. We're being real intentional, making certain that the learning that we are providing to our teachers is carried over to our administrators as well. So, here in this particular slide, you will see where our administrators are also being, indulging into this work as we continue to close the achievement gap. Again, this was just a snippet in regards to the work that we're doing here as a district. Progress is definitely being made, but as we are working, we are always looking for those areas in terms of improvement as we are trying to continuously close the achievement gaps of all of our students and ensuring success, not just for our students, but also for our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I know that Mr. Ferguson has a question, but I'll take Mrs. Whitfield first.
Thank you. I actually just wanted to bring up yesterday at, first of all, it was unbelievable, but you just showed us, it's unbelievable, it was really, really good, and I don't want to take away from that, especially because I have to pay for college soon, and so the impression that I'm having as a mother of a 17-year-old is like, wow, what a great school system we have. So, I'll just put that out there. But yesterday, I was at Highland Beach City Council Meeting, and I was giving them a presentation, and one of the questions they had was, how do we rank nationally as a school system? How does the Palm Beach County system rank? And so, I reached out to Dr. Miller, and he said, there aren't national rankings on school systems. So, that seemed tragic to me. I feel like there should be some way to compare us with the rest of the country to show how we are preparing children for college and career and all those things. So, there must be something out there that we can, that we can say, like, going to school in Palm Beach County is just as good or better than going in New York or New Jersey or wherever you end up being, because we have families that are from there. So, I don't know how we can do that, but I think we really should have something, because this district is incredible. And so, I think not just comparing ourselves with the rest of the state of Florida, but showing how we are when we're talking about other places in the country that you can live, that Palm Beach County is just an amazing place, and I'm sure the BDB would also love that. So, that's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Tierney, I'd like to direct your attention back to, I think it's, yeah, page seven of 22 of the slides, where we discuss the third through 10th grade ELA scores and third through eighth grade math scores. So, these, these scores, these are the number of our children who are scoring threes or better? Is that how I should interpret this?
Correct, proficient.
All right. Do we have an idea as to why the children that are identified as white are, for example, in ELA they're 4.2, and the over, the average is 4.5 for the district at large, and in respect to math, they were at a 3, as opposed to 4.3? Do we have any idea as to why our white students are lagging in that respect?
For white students specifically?
Yes.
I don't have a, I don't have a specific theory for white students traditionally have done well over the years in testing, and I think the cohesion between...
Do we have an idea as to why the children that are identified as white are, for example, in ELA they're 4.2 and the over, the average is 4.5 for the district at large, and in respect to math, they're at a three, as opposed to 4.3? Do we have any idea as to why our white students are lagging in that respect?
For white students specifically?
Yes.
I don't have a, I don't have a specific theory for white students traditionally have done well over the years in testing, and I think the cohesion between the regional office, the people who work to support schools, and then Dr. Sheffield's office, and providing the training and curriculum are going to continue to elevate all, including white. And we have a very tight system this year on observing classrooms, meeting with Dr. Sheffield's team in real time, so that we are refining the training that she referenced so often in order to improve instruction and therefore outcomes.
Yeah, because I mean, obviously, the white students proficiency level, proficiency level is much higher than the other demographics, I can see that. But obviously, from my standpoint, I like to see the tide raise all ships. So unless, unless you're saying that extremely large number of the white students are already at a five, obviously you can't go any higher than that, but if we can kind of look into that, that would be helpful for next year.
Probably performing higher had the least room to improve, so just we saw greater gains for the students to whom we owed the greatest debt, and we still saw everyone going up, but I would think someone is going to lag behind in each list, and I think there, it was this group.
Yeah. I know, but I mean, there's still at least 30% that are not at three, so, and again, I'm not assuming that everybody who's at 70.8 or 70.5 is at a five. In fact, I'd be willing to bet my next check that's not the case. So just for me, for next year, if we, if there's a way for us to kind of qualify that as far as, you know, what's going on, because all students need attention, so that's, that's the point I want to convey to you all. But as usual, good job, great presentation to both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews.
Thank you. And I just want to say to the superintendent, the administration, and especially the school center, the teachers and the children, we're just so proud of that A rating. People had to work really hard together. As you heard here, members of this district, staff, went out to the schools and gave time to really work with our children, to work in our school centers. So I see the trajectory going up for the school district of Palm Beach County. We have our A again, and that's to be celebrated. And certainly tonight, we're going to be talking about raises for our teachers and our non-bargaining unit and our substitutes. We have to just honor the people that truly get on the ground and do the work, so I'm just really pleased that we have a trajectory going up. And I want to say, I'm so proud of the Glades region, I mean, I was just there this morning, and I just know it's 40 miles from sitting right here, and a lot of the children don't get a chance to have all the things that many of the children in Palm Beach County have. And for everyone that went out there and worked so hard to show that, the skill set is there, the children want to learn, they want to be recognized for their abilities, and we need to give them every opportunity to have the best teachers and success. So I was just really proud of my Glades region, and I'm going to be celebrating with them as we move forward. And I've spoken to Mr. Burke, as well as Mr. Tierney and Dr. Sheffield. I, I love Miami Dade and Broward, we're part of the Council of Greats City Schools, as well as the Urban Seven, and I'm hoping that we're going to spend some time collaborating with them. I mean, we, we used to be on top of them, you know, we used to be the main kids here in, in the process of being right at the top. So I don't know what they're doing to kind of move it a little faster than us, because we are moving, but they're moving a little faster than we are. And so I'm hoping that we will get some field trips to go and talk to their leaders. I know you'll see some, some of them at the council, but hopefully we can schedule some time so that we can get together with them and figure out what is it, some of the little aspects of what they're doing that's making them move even faster. And, but we're just appreciative of all the things that's happened with our children. And I was really, I'm excited, Mr. Tierney, because I walked with you when we actually worked hard to get those advanced coursework in the elementary schools, the middle schools, and to work with the counselors and the teachers to do that, that's a big deal. And when you show these graphs, we're just, we're going up, 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 and we're just going to have to go up, up, up faster to beat Miami Dade and Broward, and I know we can do it because we beat them before. And I was just really pleased with, when you look at all of the, the ACE programs and, and all of the dual enrollment programs, you know, our children are so excited, their parents are excited, they're starting college already. I was in a high school today, and one of the children told me, I'm already in dual enrollment, Ms. Andrews, and I can take it right here at Pahokee Middle Senior High School. So we're doing a lot of great things, and we just need to celebrate ourselves, and know there's still much more to do. When we look at our black population, our ELL, students with disabilities, we see all this growth, but we don't have to kind of try to do it all by ourselves. So I just really want us to work with the Urban Seven, especially the ones to the south of us, because they copied off of us to get to where they are. So we just have to come together as a team and work together. But congratulations to our teachers, to everybody, the district hiring those teachers, recruiting them and making it happen, all of the substitutes, the retired teachers that come back and take advantage of teaching our children. We're getting it done here in Palm Beach County. I'm, I'm just truly excited about it. So congratulations to everybody, especially our students, our teachers and our school centers.
Ms. Ayella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, thank you both for the presentation. I wanted to say that I appreciate the perspective with which you presented the information on the progress that's been made. I really think that there's a lot in here that gives me hope about the trajectory of the realization of who needs the most support and how to do that. So I really appreciate that, and especially your comments, Mr. Tierney, on what we're going to do to make sure that ELL students are supported in their success, because in most charts, they are the lowest performing group. So to that point, I wanted to ask if you could share specific strategies that have proven helpful and how we plan to continue expanding that for supporting our teachers in that instruction, as well as our students in absorbing that.
English language learners?
Yes, please.
We're, we're making sure that the support in the classrooms, that the schools are staffed with, are spending as much time as possible in those classrooms, and that's from, you know, reports we get from schools and then observations for when we are in visiting schools. And then we are constantly, I referenced this before, we're constantly refining our professional development, so that when we do classroom walkthroughs, every Tuesday we get together with the academic team, Dr. Sheffield and her direct reports, and then we, we kind of look at the highlights and we look at where we believe there are deficiencies in instruction and student outcomes, where it's just something the school should be doing differently, then the schools are asked to adjust whatever practices they have in order to address that, when we think it's a professional development issue or something that we need to be, have additional training on. As I said before, in real time, we are kind of interacting with the team that provides the professional development that Dr. Sheffield spoke so much, spent so much time talking about, to have it at the next cadre training, at the next school-based leadership training to address right away any deficiencies we have. And then, of course, with our new executive director from Multicultural, we walk very, work very, very closely with her. She's an important part of all those meetings to insert herself and her team into the success of those students as well.
Thank you. I'm really impressed with the outcomes and feel confident in that. I wanted to say that I've seen, I think it's Echo, the snowy owl in action with foundations, so very great tool in our classrooms. I think we were in a classroom together where I got to see the owl interact with the students and get them engaged. The phonics piece is so important, as we're seeing, and I think it's huge for ELLs as well, making sure that that foundation of understanding language and two or three is, is solid. So really great presentation, very heartened and positive about a lot of the progress, and it's just about continuing to stay focused. So thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to thank the board too for all the support and the resources that you provided to make this work possible, and thank the team for executing, and I do think we're heading in the right direction, and we'll, we'll stay on top of it. So Mr. Tierney, Dr. Sheffield, thank you for the presentation there. And I'm going to welcome up Mr. Tim Kubrick, Chief of HR. He'll be joined by Ms. Diane Wyatt, our Director of HR Compliance and Processes, and then our, Ms. Jeanree Middleton, our Assistant General Counsel, will also be helping us out. And this is a new policy that was really initiated by some changes in state law. It's policy 3.285, Teacher's Request for Special Magistrate.
Good afternoon, Chair Brill, Vice Chair McQuinn, Board Members, Superintendent Burke. Today, as Mr. Burke mentioned, we're introducing a policy establishing a process for the teacher's request for a special magistrate and presenting an overview of that process to be followed by our teachers, principals and the district staff when a teacher submits a request for a special magistrate. The process outlined here mirrors state statute and rule language, and while a policy is not necessarily required, we feel it's the best way for everyone to, to be aware of this process. When a teacher feels that they have been directed to violate a law or state board rule, the teacher must submit a written complaint to the principal within five duty days. That complaint must contain the specific provisions of law that they feel are being, or rule being violated, the act, how the act or omission, thank you, how the act or omission being directed to do violates a law or a rule and the resolution they seek. For the school responsibilities, when a, when a complaint is received, the principal has 10 days to respond in writing to the teacher's complaint. When this happens, immediately the principal is going to get support provided by HR. The response provided to the teacher must address the disputed school or district procedures or practices in question and include a recommendation to resolve the complaint or clarification of how the directive or procedure does not violate a law or rule. And really, at this stage, any issues with directives that do violate a law or Board of Education rule should be resolved at that time. However, if the teacher is not satisfied with the resolution or the response, the teacher may complete a request for appointment of a special magistrate on the Florida Department of Education website. If a complaint is elevated to the DOE, the district respondent, which would be the Chief of Human Resources, must provide the following in 15 days: confirmation that the complainant is a teacher with the district, the steps take, previously taken to resolve the complaint, and any other relevant information to address the complaint, as well as our rationale for the DOE to dismiss the complaint. The DOE reviews the complaint, notifies the teacher or the district that the complaint has either been dismissed or that the special magistrate has been appointed. And if a special magistrate is appointed, the district will secure payment to them within 30 days, or, I'm sorry, 20 days, and then participate in the following hearing. This chart here outlines the key responsibilities of each stakeholder for this process, and we will be back for development on November 6th. Open it up for any questions.
Well, nice job, Mr. Kubrick. It doesn't look like there's any questions at this point. So.
No questions.
Okay. If there's no questions, that concludes our workshops for this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's going to bring us to our special meeting. I'll give everybody. Sorry. Any need a motion to close the workshop? Motion by Mrs. Andrews, second by Mr. Barbieri. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're going to move to our special meeting. I am now going to call the special meeting to order at 3:00 PM. The record should reflect that we still have a quorum with seven board members present. Also joining us, Superintendent Michael Burke, General Counsel Sean Bernard, Inspector General Teresa Michael, and Board Clerk Tony Sinclair. Senior staff members will join us periodically as directed by the superintendent. Board members, we have, one, two, three, seven sets of minutes. Take a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Barbieri, second by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, I do have an item that's been added for good cause. Item is REG-n1 Ballin Isles Charities Foundation Ben Carson Reading Room at Timber Trace Elementary. Good cause exists for adding this agenda item so that work can get underway on Timber Trace Elementary School's Ben Carson Reading Room within the timeframe requested by the Ballin Isles Charities Foundation, which has generously agreed to financially support this initiative of the Carson Scholars Fund. Board approval is necessary to get this project underway and to avoid further delays. Mr. Superintendent, do you have any items to withdraw?
No, Madam Chair.
Board members, we have one item polled, LR1. Any other items to be polled? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second by Mr. Barbieri. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have any disclosures and abstentions? Seeing none. Superintendent comments?
Just one comment this evening. I want to say shana tova and wish everyone celebrating Rosh Hashanah, Happy New Year. Our schools are closed tomorrow, of course, but I know the, the celebration, recognition of the holiday begins this evening at sunset, so that concludes my comments. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Ayella.
Mrs. Whitfield. Mr. Barbieri. Mrs. Andrews.
Yes. Yes, I do have a few. I want to just thank the, the Orange Bowl and the Football Foundation, Playoff Football Foundation, the NFL, for really doing a great job at KEC, Canal Point Elementary School Media Center. What a great day. I'm hoping we have some of the slides up. If not, we'll just keep moving. It was big. The superintendent was out there, the children were so excited to have their new refurbished media center, and I think I saw it online with the school board, and so maybe many of you saw the video that was on the website. Everybody's excited. We're so thankful to have another media center right here within our school district with all of our business partners helping. Mr. Keith Oswald is the leader in this process. Belle Glade Elementary, KE Cunningham, just getting it done for our children, working with our business partners. And this morning at Glade Central High School, we had Thank a Teacher, and it was my honor to meet Mr. Cortez this morning. He was a student at Glade Central, so we are growing our own, Mr. Kubrick. He went back to school to get his degree, and he's just a young man that's making a difference, and he was honored by HCA Florida Healthcare Palms West with a $350 check today. His kid says, hooray, he's the best teacher ever. And we just had a wonderful time. The band was there, the cheerleaders were there, and we were just so excited to congratulate someone that we grew right from the classroom into the classroom at Glade Central. He's a raider all the way, so we're happy with him. And I don't know if many of you saw the article in the Palm Beach Post this weekend with Omar Hukabuck. Chief Mooney, one of your guys, out there with the badge. I saw him this morning, I touched his badge, but he's also the football coach, and they're winning, winning, winning. But he's really working with the children, talking with them about how they can be the best that they can be. You don't have to win every football game, you don't have to go to the NFL, but you just want to learn, grow and develop to be a successful citizen and be productive in the society. So I just loved Omar, and he is part of the Glades region. He came back home to make a difference. And then I'm looking at the agenda. I'm so excited for all of our teachers, because they're going to get a larger paycheck, our non-bargaining unit people, and certainly for our substitutes. We have increased the salary for substitutes. We're paying them more, and that's how come we're an A-rated district, because we value our people. So I'm just thrilled today to say, that's a lot of great news, a lot of great things happening within the Palm Beach County School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just want to update the community on a few events that I was able to attend since our last school board meeting on September the 19th. The official day is not Take Your Child to School Day, and I'm sorry that it's slipping my mind right now, but in any event, I had a chance to go to Roosevelt Elementary and get a chance to kind of spend some time with some of the parents, the dads, the moms who took their children to Roosevelt on that day. I know that was a countywide event, I think I even saw the district post a video as well at one of our schools. So it's good to see such a large turnout of family support there, and there's some photos up there on the screen, I guess, now posted as well. And then also our annual Constitution Day, that was a big success. The area was packed on that Friday with students from across our county. A few of them actually, I guess essentially was, they were kind of acting like appellate lawyers, speaking to the judges about criminal issue that had some First Amendment right issues involved in it, so it was really cool just to be here with that, as you can see, very large turnout as well. So great job to Dr. Johnson and everyone else who helped coordinate that, Dr. Sheffield and every, the entire gang who did that as well. And then I also had a chance to speak with some who I anticipate will be future principals here in the district on September 23rd at Orchard View, which is down in Delray, definitely outside of District Seven, but it was good to spend some time down there, speaking with them, sharing my experience, hearing some of their experiences as well, a very productive conversation. And then we had a great Town Hall 14 in Riviera Beach that was on the 24th. Days are really starting to run together here. But in any event, had a really good turnout, a lot of interest in Riviera Beach in terms of what we're looking to do in terms of reshaping early education. I think that kind of falls into what the Ed Foundation spoke about earlier, and some of the board members have expressed in terms of the importance of increasing the number of children who are kindergarten-ready, and how that ties into future success, not just in school, but in life. Also, the Project Uplift Community Cleanup was on September 28th. Again, we had another large turnout. We had more, much more than that number there. We had roughly six- We had roughly 60 people, and we're going to, of course, have it again the fourth Saturday of this month, and we definitely are expecting an extremely large turnout. In fact, we have a guest attendee. I don't want to spill the beans just yet, but we'll have a guest attendee out there sweating with us, helping to make West Palm Beach beautiful. And then last but not least, yesterday I had a chance to go to the College Fair, and it was really good. It was really good. I was speaking with staff, and they told me that we had even more schools here this year than we did in the years past. So, I want to compliment, I know you're all not here, those of you who made that such an amazing success, but I want to congratulate you and encourage you all to continue pushing to the higher mark. The children are benefiting from the hard work that you all are putting in. So, even if nobody sees it, if nobody pats you every single day, just understand that you all are doing a really good job, and I just want to encourage you all to continue doing what you need to do to make sure that our kids always come first. And with that, I'm done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Vice Chair McQuinn? Okay, so I just want to also say shana tova to all of those who will be celebrating, wishing you a happy, healthy, prosperous, and sweet New Year. And I do want to just point out, just to piggyback on what Mrs. Andrews said, you know, the increase that we're giving our substitute teachers, this is the first time since July of 2022 that we're seeing an increase for our substitutes, and it's something that many of us have been asking for. And just to our retired teachers who are out there, we're now paying $20 an hour for our retired teachers who come back. So, come back and help us. We miss you here at Team Palm Beach. We have one agenda item speaker, CTA President Gordon Longhauffer. Come on up.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, board members. Chair Brill, Vice Chair McQuinn, Superintendent Burke, and honored guests. I am Gordon Longhauffer, President of the Classroom Teachers Association. I join Superintendent Burke and Chair Brill in wishing all who observe Rosh Hashanah a blessed and sweet New Year. I am speaking today on Agenda Item LR2. Today, I ask you to vote in support of the tentative agreement before you, but my recommendation comes with added information. Florida is ranked 50th in average teacher pay, and we can all agree that public education is grossly underfunded by the state. And though we may do a bit better in Palm Beach County, even our average salary lags well behind the national average. And on top of that, Palm Beach County is objectively the second most costly Florida county in which to live and work. Accordingly, the last three agreements, which raise teacher salaries by 4% or more, are quite simply not extraordinary achievements. Rather, they are necessary steps to recruit and retain teachers in our school system and enable them to live in or near the communities they serve and pay their bills with a single job. Indeed, teachers are quite honestly earning every dollar they are paid. Mr. Tierney spoke earlier of the work that teachers have done to return our district to its A-rating, and they did that in spite of the fact that the state, with its moving target, placed the goal higher than it ever has been before. Given the information I've shared, the work done by teachers, the costs they must bear in southeast Florida, and the recent pattern of better raises, I ask you to join me in a commitment to 4% as the new floor for annual raises. Teachers have done and continue to do hard work in spite of obstacles placed by state government and continue to excel. We must therefore find and chart a new path, one that shows teachers the tangible appreciation we all know they have earned and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will now, that moves us to the consent agenda. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, that brings us to new business, LR1.
Yes, I recommend the board approve the proposed school calendars for the 2025-2026 and 2026-2027 school years as submitted.
Motion by Mr. Ferguson, second by Mr. Barbieri. Any discussion? No, it's actually my discussion. I pulled it because my constituents overwhelmingly have asked every year that we not start school until the third week of August. And so, as usual, I'm going to be voting against the calendar. Ms. Ayala?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a different question that I was hoping to ask through you to the superintendent regarding the calendar. I recall that there was discussions last meeting with regards to Juneteenth as well as other holidays, and in looking at the calendar, given that it is in June and that the district closes on Fridays during the summer, I had a question about how that would impact community childcare opportunities when we move it to the Thursday closing as well. If you could please explain how that will impact our community.
Yeah, so, yeah, the discussion from the last workshop, we felt there was a, I walked away with the sentiment that we need to treat this as a holiday like we would treat any other, like if it was July 4th or June 19th. So, we went back to the drawing board and adjusted the calendar that with the district being closed, June 19th will fall in 2025 on a Friday. We're already closed because of our four-day weeks, so to commemorate that holiday, we are going to shut everything down on that Thursday, June 18th, which will close our, we'll avoid scheduling summer school on that date, and then it also impacts our summer camp programs.
Madam Chair, a follow-up. Is that the case for both years that this is approving?
It is, because in 2026, June 19th falls on a Saturday, so we would, and we continue to back that up to the work, the scheduled workday that normally would be in place before the holiday. So, we will be closed on Thursday, June 17th in 2026.
One more follow-up. Yeah, that's concerning to me on that front. I know a lot of, I've been hearing in regards to the potential changes in times for bus schedules, given our opening that is being required by the state and the start times, that one of the biggest concerns families and parents are having adapting that into their lives is the difficulty of finding childcare. So, I'm not thrilled at making that more difficult when a day is already closed and off. That's what I'm not understanding, is the day is off, it's a national holiday, we recognize it, we support it, but we are now taking another day where parents have to find additional accommodations for childcare.
The, well, what I would say is I appreciate the board approving the calendars well in advance, and that's why we brought them to you kind of proactively, so that our families can start planning well ahead, and we'll be sure as we promote our summer school programs to make it known that we're going to be closed on those dates and that families will just need to plan accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ferguson?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to ask you a question. You said that a large number of your constituents would prefer that we start after the third week in August. Can you just elaborate on that, please?
Actually, it's the third Monday of the month, and it's because a lot of them, some of the teachers that are in my district teach out of state, some of the parents have their children in programs out of state, and we're so out of alignment with the rest of the country in terms of, well, at least the Northeast, in terms of when we start. You know, many of them, the schools don't start until right after Labor Day. So, you know, every year, and I don't know that you've seen the emails, I think that a lot of them have stopped. They've come to me wanting to be on the calendar committee. I know that it creates a pay gap, there are other unintended consequences, but because it is an issue, and some of these parents have children that do miss those first few days of school, that's why I vote against it.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 4-2, with Ms. Ayala and Chairwoman Brill in opposition. Mr. Superintendent, REG-N1. 4-2. 5-2, sorry. Blame it on my voice and my head. Thank you.
Okay, REG-N1. I recommend the board approve the contract with the Carson Scholars Fund for the establishment of a Ben Carson Reading Room at Timber Trace Elementary.
Motion by Mr. Barbieri, second by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? Mrs. Andrews?
I'm just so thrilled that we're going to have another Ben Carson Reading Room. This is a big thing for our children here in Palm Beach County, so I'm hoping that this will pass because it's good for our kids.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews. I believe we're up to about 40 now, so we're well represented in Palm Beach County.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll take a motion now to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Barbieri, second by Mr. Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That will bring us now to our special meeting for school safety and security, the FSAT findings. I will now call the special meeting for school safety, security, FSAT findings to order at 3:18 PM. The record will reflect that we have a quorum with seven board members present. We don't have any agenda item speakers, so we'll move to the presentation.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to welcome, they've joined us here, Chief Sarah Mooney and Deputy Chief Vanessa Snow. This is an annual requirement that we submit our FSAT report to the state, and before we asked the board to vote on this item, we wanted to do a brief presentation. So, we're getting that presentation pulled up now, and we'll have a little time. I'll just remind everyone that our school police department is fully accredited and received the highest rating of Excelsior. Chief Mooney?
Thank you for that recognition on the Excelsior again. Appreciate that every time. Good afternoon, Chair Brill, Madam Vice Chair McQuinn, and the rest of the board. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our FSAT findings and/or overview for this year. I just want to kind of reiterate the fact that school safety specialist position is, has very specific responsibilities to it that is part and partial to the police chief position. And this FSAT presentation is going to be, basically, a lot of it's going to go through Deputy Chief Snow, who is our designated school safety specialist. The difference in our jobs is we definitely work together like we do with every other department in the district in order to ensure that we have the most comprehensive safety and security plan on all of our campuses and facilities. But that school safety specialist position really keeps us in line with all of the requirements that the state brings forward, changes that they have in the laws, best practices, in addition to building a team that helps us support each of our campuses with following all those rules and regulations and trying to get through all the weeds on what they have to do as opposed to what the best practices are. I can tell you that in reviewing this, the FSATS from this year, which were, they were completed in May and June of this year with the assistance of all of our school police officers on each of our campuses, they're going to look very similar, excuse me, the findings are going to look very similar than they did last year, in that I think that the county, the district has done a very good job of being proactive and kind of staying one step ahead of what the regulations are and what the mandates are from the state. So, we consistently see the same type of things in the FSATS, at least over the past two or three years, which just asks for more things to expand what we're already doing. We've mentioned that we do a bunch of layering in our security plans, that you're going to see that in the results today, and consistently, we are looking for more cameras, we're looking for more access control readers, we need more options on locks and that type of thing. However, we, you will see that we're in compliance with everything that we have to do, but that's not where we want to stop, obviously. We've always said that, you know, there's no finish line to our safety and security plans, but I think as you, as we go through these, go through these slides, there's not a whole lot of them, and Deputy Chief goes through the things that we have been in compliance with and the things that we go over and beyond with, that you'll see that I think we're on the right path, and with your support, we continue to keep our schools safe. Today's meeting is a review of some of the things that we already presented during the closed session. It's statutorily, we're obligated to present this in a public forum. We're more than willing to take feedback from you on the results that we have today, and then after the vote, after this presentation, we will be sending the results up to the state to advise them that we have presented it to the board in a public fashion. So, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Snow.
Okay, thank you, Chief Mooney. Good afternoon, board. As mentioned, 215 security risk assessments were completed for FY 24-25, and we're pleased to report that all of these assessments were 100% compliant with both state statute and the Office of Safe Schools requirements and best practices. As we've mentioned before, these assessments are forward-looking site inspections that are completed in collaboration with our staff, our school police, and many of our district departments, including facilities construction, M&amp;P O, equity and wellness purchasing, and our security system shop. And this is all done for the purpose of making informed safety and security site recommendations. Thank you. Two resounding themes appeared when we went through the results of these security assessments, the first being that, as Chief Mooney mentioned, schools do continue to request security enhancements to include additional fencing, card access, cameras, and access control, and also to augment their lighting on campuses. So, with that, we recommend the continued funding for these district-wide safety initiatives, which we have so gratefully enjoyed those expenditures by you over the years, so thank you. And we also recommend enhancing our tracking of these security systems projects from initial assessment through completion. We know that each of us are pinged on the regular when we go to our campuses, asking what's the status of our security upgrades. This tracking will allow us to have real-time responses. The second theme that we identified was that the recent approval of procedural mandates by the state legislature has required us to adjust our current processes and allocation of resources on our campuses, not just school police, but also our school staff and administrative support. So, to that end, we recommend supporting the ongoing training and review of existing district policies to ensure compliance with our school-based staff, along with maintenance and, maintenance and plant operations, excuse me. And we also ask that you consider the financial and resource implications of these new mandates and potentially adjust the budget if needed, and lastly, to discuss additional options for campus perimeter security if needed. So, based on the foregoing, we would request that the board acknowledge and accept these findings today, and we open it up for any questions.
Any questions, board members? Okay, seeing none.
All right, and they'll take us to the agenda item. SP1, I recommend the board accept the School Safety and Security Florida Safe School Assessment Tool, known as FSAT, finding summary, and authorize the district to take action to implement the proposed recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Barbieri, second by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Barbieri, second by Mrs. Whitfield. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for putting up with my voice.